Hello, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone. Do we have any citizens comments this evening? I see some faces up on the screen. Anything that you know of Dr. Hanfield?
Uh, no, no, Mr. Chair. Um, I do not believe there's any citizens comments today.
Okay. We do have some special recognitions and for that I will turn it over to Dr. Hanfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening everyone. Um, yes, uh, special recognition this evening. Um, Aaron Zhang was, um, designated as the superintendent's scholar for twenty twenty-one. You know, Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, uh, the Worcester County Superintendent's Association, Association as they do every year recognizes the, uh, scholar from each of the member schools, uh, which there are fifty-three. Again, the sh- recipient was Aaron Zhang and I would recite his accomplishments. But he, um, would be, um, uh, probably embarrassed if I did so, so I would just say Harvard Yellen Brown, um, with Harvard being, uh, Aaron's fall destination. And again, I know on behalf of everyone here, we're so proud of Aaron and wish him the best, uh, as he moves on to, uh, the next chapter.
Excellent. Any comments?
He's just made Arvin so proud. That is just so awesome. His family must be over the moon.
Yeah, very excited.
Yep.
I hope he got a nice scholarship because I hear it's very expensive there too.
He'll do okay.
That's good.
So this year, because someone asked me, so I probably should let people know. So typically what happens is that, you know, um, this is event usually held every year at one of the, it was the area university, colleges and universities. And obviously because of COVID that couldn't happen, so, um, it was held at, um, Commerce Bank Stadium or Foley Field, as some people may know it. And, um, everybody sat up in the bleachers and they had a nice little, um, speech and, you know, recognition of the kids, uh, that were there. And they all got a nice little token of appreciation from the Worcester County Superintendent's Association. So it was a really nice night and, um, thank, uh, Dr. Maureen Benender and the city of Worcester for, um, stepping up and getting us the stadium and arranging for the police detail for the crossing there and everything. So it was nice. It was nice.
Good.
Well deserved.
That's excellent. And the student representative who takes Aaron's place has got some big shoes to fill.
Yes, we haven't quite gotten there yet, but we will. Um, but yes, um, the, the last several, um, between, uh, Ms. Schoenfeld and, uh, Mr. Zhang, um, there's lots of shoes to fill. No pressure, uh, on Jasmine.
No.
Who I don't see her on tonight yet, but in any event.
Well, we could, we could move ahead and if they show up one.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, so we have this evening, if, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, we'll go a little bit out of order. We have this evening, uh, with us, um, Mr. Gregory Pratt, hi Greg, and two of his students. And, um, they participated in an, uh, AdCap virtual workshop. AdCap is an organization that partners with global leaders in business technology and innovation to uplift young leaders and shows them how to think like social entrepreneurs to help them make a difference in school communities. So Mr. Greg Pratt, who's our department chair for health and wellness for the district, uh, helped the students participate in a virtual workshop to create something that would improve the wellness of their school community. Students at AHS were awarded a one thousand dollar grant to implement their project. Their project is called Spin Grip, a spinner that works as a pen and a flashlight. The participating students provided six hundred and fifty spin grip pens to all students at AHS. And, um, what I'm gonna do now, uh, Mr. Pratt and company is, um, I have your video, so I'm gonna try and get that going for you. Hopefully the audio works and here we go.
This fall, the wellness department was given an opportunity to bring a group of students to a virtual, uh, workshop where students were tasked with coming up with an idea that would improve the wellness of their school community. And the Auburn High School students came up with a winning idea, so they were awarded a one thousand dollar grant to implement their plan. The, uh, organization that gave us the money is called AdCap and want to empower students to have ideas and make an impact in their community. And the Auburn High School students did a great job of representing us.
Back in October, a group of five of us took part in an opportunity which allowed us to pitch an idea and potentially receive a grant. As one of the teams who were selected, we were able to get the opportunity to fund a project we thought could be beneficial to the school community. Between then and now, we have been figuring out a way to implement our project for everyone to receive one.
These pens can help to make it easier for students to pay attention in classes as well as being beneficial for studying or can be used to fidget with.
Do you tend to be fidgety? Do you tend to forget a pen?
What a really exciting product it looks like you created. So if you want, kind of just maybe fill us in a little bit?
Sure, yes, I will, uh, I'll start and then each of the two students will just have a, a brief bit to say thank you for having us this evening. So this was a student-centered experience that five members of AHS took part of in the fall. And as Dr. Hanfield stated, the organization is called AdCap and their mission is to empower students to improve the wellness of their communities, uh, and to foster an entrepreneurial spirit. So we rounded up five willing enable high school students in October and they spent about four hours on Zoom, uh, on a nice October evening. And, um, they were able to, to win the prize. So two of them were available tonight to share their experience with you, so I'm gonna hand it off to, to Anna to let you know about that, uh, evening in October.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Now, before gaining the money from AdCap commit, from the AdCap committee, we entered a contest as stated where we had to come up with a design and several factors of our product, including budget, material, what makes our product unique and our purpose for the product. Our team met with a mentor from AdCap to brainstorm ideas. We eventually decided on a pen that can be used as a fidget because it would be more likely easier than the other option we had thought of, which would be an environmentally safe clear mask. After we finished brainstorming and designing, we, along with schools from a variety of states, proposed our ideas and pitched our products to the judges. We were all very excited to hear that Auburn High School had been one of the schools that won the thousand dollar grant. And it was an honor working with so many talented students from Auburn and learning from other students from all across the US, especially as a freshman. And I'm going to pass it off to Ashley Pelletier.
Thanks, Anna. So it took a little bit for the money to come in, but once we got the money, we were able to come up with a design and logo for the pen. And as you saw in the video, the pen is, um, a stylus, a fidget, a flashlight and a black inked pen. As Anna said, we had two ideas, the reusable and washable mask for kids to wear with glasses and the fidget pen. We realized that the best option was the fidget pen because we could buy more of them and be a better, it'd be better for the community. So that, that was a great experience, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Anna and Ashley. Unfortunately, the audio didn't come through, um, Dr. Hanfield's copy, but the video has been linked on, I believe, the district Facebook page. And, uh, if, if it is not an active link, we can definitely put it out again for the community to see. But that basically sums up the experience of our, our students, uh, with this activity.
Excellent. Any, any comments?
I just think that's a fantastic design and I'm actually curious to see what, what comes next. So will you guys be selling it, the, these at the school store or does it go on, um, to, I guess, um, can other companies now license that design to be used for other promotional material? What happens next?
Well, uh, during a Thursday during lunch, we handed them out. At first, we were thinking about taking a dollar donation that people wanted, um, but we decided to leave that out and instead we got really bright faces and happy faces that they were able to, um, get a spin grip. And ever since then, I have seen teachers playing with them and students as well.
It's really great. That's fantastic.
Any other comments?
Mr. Hanfield, did they give you one?
Uh, no, not yet. Um, but that's okay. Uh, they were, they were busy. They only had a limited budget. They only had a thousand dollars to work with. So we wanted to make sure that the AHS community was, um, was taken care of first. But, um, what I would say, um, is that we would be very much open to, um, assisting you with maybe more production um, of your spin grips, uh, and perhaps, you know, getting those, uh, into the middle school, um, having, you know, others on hand. I mean, Mrs. Coff makes a great point. Um, you know, it's wonderful, um, you know, kind of pro Auburn public schools material. So, um, now was the thousand dollar, the thousand dollars covered everything?
Yes, so actually our group of five really wanted to use the thousand dollars and the product to maybe make it a perpetual thing where they could take donations, kind of build up the money and then get more for the younger grades.
Sure.
Uh, I sort of had them put the brakes on that because of the grant requirements, we kind of had to close out the, the situation. But moving forward, I, I think these students, I'm sure, would be interested in, in kind of getting the group back together next year if there was an opportunity to provide something similar to, uh, this for the younger grades.
And, uh, how was it? So who, so who produced it? Did you just, was there a company that you, that they, that the AdCap, uh, or did you just give AdCap the idea and they did the rest?
Do Ashley or Anna do one? Do you want to field that question?
Uh, I can take care of that, Mr. Pratt. Uh, so once we got the thousand dollar grant, it was really up to us to make it happen. So we had originally thought of creating it all by ourselves, but as time went on and our deadline grew a little closer, we realized that making it entirely on our own would be a lot more of a challenge. So the rest of our team and I looked into finding a similar product to what we had originally thought of and we ended up purchasing it from another company.
Okay. Okay. Well, if you have any leftover, um, and you might spin a, a handful or so, my, well, maybe I can stop by school and I pick up a handful. And I'd love to, um, get them into the hands of, of our other building administrators and see what they think. And, um, you know, we, I think we could probably definitely look into, um, help funding, uh, fund this moving forward. Um, definitely for the high school, um, and then, you know, if there's a, um, you know, an appetite for it, so to speak, at the middle high school, uh, excuse me, at the middle high school, the, the middle school, elementary schools, um, you know, we could probably help with that as well. So, um, awesome job, um, way to be creative, way to think out of the box and way to develop something that has real utility in a variety of, uh, different, different areas. So kudos to all of you. That was really, that's really great job.
If you do want to stop by, Mr. Hanfield, there are plenty of extras.
Okay, alright.
Right.
That sounds good.
I think it's, I think it was an excellent design and excellent idea. Um, thank you, Mr. Pratt, for, for leading them in that direction. Um, I just don't, I don't want to look around me and see everyone on the school committee playing with them. While we're trying to run a meeting here, but before and after the meetings, I guess, is okay. And maybe we should take this.
Yeah, but the day after we distributed them, the number of teachers that told me that we, we just handed out everything teachers hate to all the students at once. And flashlights, they're doodling, um, but a- as I, I think that was, uh, Ashley might've said, now, now you see more teachers playing with them too.
Yeah, I especially have one teacher that even though she's teaching, she's just fidgeting with it. She's like, I'm sorry, guys, uh, this is just too much fun.
Maybe you shouldn't mention the teacher's name because we don't want her to get a poor observation when, when her observer walks by and she's playing.
That's why I didn't, that's why I didn't.
Great thinking.
And if I may, um, the reason why we decided a multi-use pen would be useful would to, um, take down on the distractions because most schools have banned fidget spinners because that's all that they are, is a fidget that often causes a distraction. So we figured if it had another use, it would possibly take down on the amount of distraction it would be during classes.
Well, that was pretty sneaky, Anna. Kind of get the spinner back into action again. I love the way you guys think. That's, that's wonderful. And as long as your teachers are on board, I guess it's a good thing. And if they're not, you can just blame Mr. Pratt, right? No, that was excellent.
Luckily the teachers were on board. Luckily the teachers were on board. Like we were handing them out during lunch and apparently some of the teachers had students come down to us to get. Um, they're like, where are you? Get me one.
Great. They're becoming a big hit. No, that's, that's a great job. Any other comments before we?
Great.
bid them a farewell.
I can't wait to see one.
I know, I want one.
I will.
Yeah.
Well, I already got some, um, to you all and thank you so much for the opportunity, uh, to present it this evening to you. Um, it means a lot to, to the group. So thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. Great job all. Have a nice night. Good night.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Let's lighten things up a little bit.
I can just see a fact of meeting with Superintendent Hanfield and they're all playing with them.
Just shine right in the, right in the eyes.
I know, uh, I will, I will make it a point to go and get some and bring some back for the June sixteenth meeting. It would be the farewell gift to everyone for the summer.
I know that I couldn't be trusted with one. It's, I'll, I'll admit that.
Oh, there's Jasmine. I was just gonna say, where's Jasmine? There she is.
So we will move on to the student representatives report. If Jasmine is ready to go.
She wants to, then she popped over.
She wants to get one of those spinners.
Spin it at that point.
Or maybe we'll, um, we'll move on. If Jasmine pops up again, we'll go ahead with the student representatives report. So since I don't see Jasmine, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of five nineteen twenty-one.
I'll make that motion to accept the minutes for five nineteen twenty-one.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is a vote. Can we now move on to the superintendent's report?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, listed first underneath unfinished business is the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay. I will take it from there. So all members, um, were able to, um, take a look at Mr. Hanfield's goals, objectives, and according to, um, state frameworks and the state evaluation, um, process, um, we came up with some, some final numbers for the superintendent's, um, superintendent's evaluation for this year, for his first year. And, um, what a, what a fantastic year it was and what, what a way to start. Um, right out of the gate, um, nothing but, nothing but challenges and, and, um, I feel sorry for any superintendent who this was their, um, freshman year, so to speak, in the, in the seat. So, um, I think, I think it, it turned out very well. And as, as, uh, Dr. Hanfield will always, will always tell you, it's, you know, it, it, it wasn't him alone, but it was an entire district, staff, parents, students, um, who, who brought him to, uh, to this point. And I think it was, I, I think I would certainly call it a successful year. And after looking at the, the numbers, um, it seems like as a, as a board, we were all on the same page. So what I will do is just, is sort of go over some of these numbers with you and then we'll open it up for discussion. So under student learning goals, um, first, first let me say for each, each of the three categories, um, of goals noted below, student learning, professional practice and district improvement. Um, we have assigned, um, a value based on progress made as reported and evidence provided as select examples. The scale being between one to twenty, with twenty being the highest possible rating. Um, related to student learning goals, Mr., um, Dr. Hanfield received a twenty out of twenty. Um, nicely done, Dr. Hanfield. Professional practice goals, um, Dr. Hanfield scored nineteen point eight out of twenty. Also very well done, as Dr. Hanfield will, will tell you, no, nobody is perfect. So, um, maybe next year will he'll be at a nineteen point eight for professional, I mean nineteen point nine for professional practicals. Practice goals, I'm sorry, but he's not expecting to be a twenty. Um, district improvement goals, um, Dr. Hanfield received a nineteen point six out of twenty. So, um, on behalf of the Dr. Hanfield and his goals, um, for this year, I think those, those numbers are, are phenomenal. And as I said, I think as a board, I think, um, and, and no opinions were shared amongst us. These, um, these, um, score sheets were simply handed out, a- as were Dr. Hanfield's goals for the years. We were able to look them over and it seems like, again, we're, we're all on the same page here and we think even with all the adversity that, that, that he faced and, and, and all the obstacles that were placed in front of him, it was a, a pretty good year. So congratulations on that piece. As far as the Department of Ed and Secondary Ed Evaluation Instrument, um, for each of the four standards based on the superintendent's self-assessment, um, as well as, um, his supporting comments, we provided a score, um, of a possible ten with t-, um, one out of ten, ten being the highest possible score. Under standard one, instructional leadership, Dr. Hanfield scored a nine point eight out of ten. Again, not, not too shabby. Um, under standard two, management and operations, Dr. Hanfield scored a ten out of ten. Under standard three, family and community engagement, Dr. Hanfield scored a nine point eight out of ten. Standard four, professional culture, Dr. Hanfield scored a nine point eight out of ten. So overall score, aggregate score of the five members on this board, Dr. Hanfield scored a ninety-eight point eight out of one hundred. Um, we can't really get, um, too much closer, um, to perfection wi- wi- without being perfect. Then again, I'll go back to, um, Dr. Hanfield's statements in our earlier meetings. Um, I don't expect to be perfect. There's always work to be done. Can always be better. Uh, he doesn't really have much more, um, room as far as that goes. But, um, I will let Dr. Hanfield speak to, um, speak to these scores and, um, just sort of explain, you know, the criteria involved in the scoring and just to give us a little briefing and then I'll, I'll, I'll allow the, um, committee to, um, say a few words on, on his behalf. So if you just wanna, um, just sort of summarize what I just went through, do you have this in front of you?
No, um, but that's okay. I can, I can, I can go off the cuff.
That's great.
So, uh, first of all, I, I want to say, and I want to echo, uh, Mr. Scobie's comments that, you know, um, you know, it is a huge team effort. Um, and, you know, it's Beth, it's Cecilia, it's all of you. Um, it's our administrative team, it's our faculty, our staff, our kids, our parents, um, the overwhelming support that we receive in the town. I never felt that more than when I was at town meeting. Um, you know, not a question on the school budget. And, and so I take that as we did our job, you know? So, uh, again, it's, uh, you know, this is an instrument that has to be done because it's, it's law. Um, but certainly, you know, it, it, it's, it takes a village and, and I'm just one part of that village. Um, so thank you very much, um, overall. Um, I'm just, I'm humbled by the scores. Um, with respect to the, to the goals, you know, the goal piece, yeah, I mean, y- you're always looking to get better. You're always looking to get better and, you know, I, I think when you put together goals, i- i- if you are doing them right, you never truly meet them because you're always trying to get better. Um, and so on the goal piece, you know, that's my overarching thought on that. I mean, certainly this year with them coming out late in October and then, you know, I'll be wrapping them up, um, you know, over the summer. Yeah, I mean, i- i- it, those are what they are. Um, so, so thank you for that. On, you know, instructional leadership and management operations and, um, you know, community interaction and professional engagement, you know, it, I, I, I think, you know, when you do this job and Beth will attest to it and Cecilia is, you know, if you really are doing this job, you know, teachers, whomever, this, it's part of who you are. This is the fabric of who you are. Um, it's just, you just live this. It's not like nine to five, like I'm a superintendent, I'm an educator, you know? I know that feeling is shared here. It's just who we are twenty-four seven. Um, and so it's just something we're always thinking about, whether it be how do we improve our instruction? Um, how do I make communications home to families to make sure that they know what's going on in the district? And they even kind of know like what I'm thinking sometimes in the moment because, you know, that's just how much I'm talking to people. And I think that's important and I, I think it's especially important in a time like this in COVID. You know, people, there was a lot of anxiety. There's still some anxiety. But we needed to get through every day and we needed to get through the, the highs and the lows, um, you know, of the year. And, and I tried to bring people through that um, to the best of, to my ability, but again, you know, to the best of our team's ability. You know, there, there is work to be done, you know, uh, there's a lot of work to be done. Um, and so, uh, you know, management and operations, it, it kind of all just flows together, you know, with respect to managing, you know, the finances of the school district in, you know, a time of fiscal crisis and how do you move forward and manage when, you know, you lose four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars and, uh, you know, it just is what it is. You find a way to push through it and, um, and that's what we did. And, uh, you know, I, I'm my own worst critic. And, you know, I've already was thinking, I was in my office today thinking of twelve other things that we, that we need to do and we need to start thinking about. And, you know, we're already projecting three years down the road, what are finances maybe gonna look like? How's that gonna impact the district? What do we need to do now to, to try to safeguard ourselves, you know, to make sure that we continue the momentum that builds in this district year after year? Um, and so, uh, I'm, you know, I'm, again, I'm humbled, uh, by the scores. Um, it's been a difficult year, but, uh,
Say that again.
But, um, I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't want to do it anywhere else in here, so.
Excellent. Well stated. Any comments?
Through the chairs, it's been a hell of a year, but you've done a tremendous job. Everybody on the leadership team really has done a tremendous job. I know that no one really knew what to do with this.
Right, right.
And, you know, you had all of us pushing and questioning, which I'm sure drove you guys crazy sometimes, but if you look at how our kids have flourished and how our teachers have flourished, I know everyone is tired, but we we kept our kids afloat. We kept our families in, you know, fed. I mean, little things, you know, that's not something we're usually responsible for, you know?
Right.
I mean, it, I just, I can't say enough good things about how, what a great job everyone has done and hopefully, hopefully you feel good about this coming out.
Thank you. I will agree more weeks, but I'm not quite home yet, but we're getting there.
Um, I'll just echo Dot. Um, if I could have given you a hundred and ten, I would have. I'm just amazed that you, all of you, the whole team, you guys were amazing this year. It's been like Dot said, a crazy, uh, tumultuous year and I don't know, I just, I, I don't know. I look at other districts and I've heard so many, um, horror stories and I'm like, wow, like Auburn is just so on top of it. Like we're on top of our game and, um, I just thank you all. Thank you, Casey, so much. I just know personally on a personal level that you never stop. So it's constant. So thank you for that.
Thanks. Any comments on this side of the table?
What a year to start. Um, I mean, this year couldn't have been perfect because we're in the middle of a global pandemic that we could never know of, but the district has pulled the gun pretty heavily since October, which many other districts have been doing our teachers, doing how to contract, we show respect to the teachers, we show respect to the families. I mean, parents' parity, it's been amazing. The nurses, I mean, you know, seeing what we've done with the nurses has been something that I was very grateful for. Um, and really, I mean, dropping my, my kids off at school and seeing a teacher in a, I think it was a blind costume on the first full day back to school, like just seeing that a lot of our kids and, um, I just, we have to, we had to send my kids to a school during the global pandemic. I can't picture sending them anywhere else. It's really a haul.
Gail, did you have anything?
I just, was your leadership, but through the, the teachers, the nurses, the cafeteria people, the custodial staff, I mean, everyone stepped up to the plate and went well beyond what you'd normally.
Everyone stepped up to the plate and went well beyond what you'd normally expect of people. And I think you set that tone and everyone else followed soon and it made things a thousand times better than it could have been. And I wanna thank you again for that.
And I would echo um the 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 sentiments of of the entire committee. I think you've done a fantastic job across the board, if there was any ever any question whether or not you could handle this job. I think this this year. No, I'm not saying I was questioning it, but you know, you never know. There 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 are critics everywhere. But no, it's it it it's been, you you've done a fantastic job, as far as um comforting the community, comforting the parents, the students. Um I think that the the weekly video goes a long way, kind of putting a face to the name. If there's actually anyone in the town of Auburn, the surrounding towns, that doesn't know um who Casey Handfield is. Um they do now because you put your face out there and and during a pandemic, um and stuff, of course. Putting that face out there is kind of sometimes setting yourself up like a target and um you've taken it um very well. Um I've, you know, we've communicated a lot throughout throughout this and you know, you've 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 dodged a few. Um bullets here and there and then, you know, had to put out a few fires and and I was very impressed with the way all of that was handled. You know, I think the the average superintendent, I don't I don't know that um that they could have handled it quite as well. I've been in education for twenty years, I've worked with five different superintendents, um I think it's five, maybe more. Um I've seen the good, the bad and the ugly and and I put you um right up on top. And again, this this is the year uh that that just kind of sets people apart, sets average people apart from from true leaders. And and again, the score says it all, um but the thanks that that we owe you um goes above and beyond any score. And again, that's not to leave out anyone on the leadership team, any of the staff, um but but someone has to be in charge. Ultimately, um that's that's the person who who needs to have the answers and um and and that that's you. And and I think you've done a tremendous job and I look forward to, you know, working with you for the next couple of years anyway and and. I think, I don't think you're gonna be off in three weeks, but I hope that you're able to at least um get a little bit of rest. You know, sort of regroup and and I think September will be um will be a fantastic start to. Fantastic start to a normal um career as a superintendent. Oh, I'm not, no, we're we're out of the woods, we're good. But no, thank you for everything and congratulations on a great evaluation and I look forward to um watching you um meet all of your goals.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now, sorry Jasmine, but you.
Yes, she is.
You left the screen momentarily, so we had to move on to Dr. Handfield's business.
Oh, if we're, I I assume so, I didn't wanna slow things down, but my, I think my wifi cut out, so I just figured. I'd come back and I guess just stay along for the ride.
I'm just glad it wasn't a plumbing incident, I was kinda concerned that maybe there was a water break somewhere.
We got plumber in, the sink is fixed, I don't even, my mom could be better anymore, so we're good.
All right, perfect.
I forgot about that.
So if you're ready to give the report, not on the plumbing incident, but whatever's going on in Auburn schools.
Um yeah, so I apologize that I wasn't at the last meeting, my tennis match ran really long. So I did send an email apologizing, but I thought I'd say it one more time. Um anyway, as for what's going on right now, I think everyone has their eyes set on one thing only and that is summer. Um but I definitely think with the new updates coming out. Um especially with being outside and being able to take our masks off, that has really been a new motivator, I think. It's kind of some light at the end of the tunnel, I think we could all agree. Um especially just at sports and seeing people's faces, such such a small thing that I feel like we all took for granted and now, I mean. It's something so special, I guess, um so that's definitely something that's been great. Um but as for in the building, I mean, I feel, I feel it too as a student. But I think it's just so difficult right now trying to keep our heads in the game and just finish strong. I see it in my classmates, I feel it myself, just, I feel like it's almost like burnout, um. But our teachers have been trying so hard to really get us over the finish line and offering extensions to the best of their ability, you know, within reason. Um so they're definitely doing their best as always to just, you know, help in any way that they can, but that's definitely, I think. What's most difficult right now is just trying to finish strong after, I mean, just a super long year. But everyone's doing their best, I think, and yeah, I guess everyone's just trying to make it through the next three weeks, so. I I think it's gonna be okay. And I guess that's it, I think under all, obviously, these weren't ideal circumstances for the year. But um I think with what we've had, we're making the best out of this situation, so and that's all you can do.
Very well said, um Jasmine, I I think you're you're absolutely right, it was a difficult year, as we just talked about, it was a difficult year for. Dr. Handfield, all staff, all families, um all of us really, um the the whole the whole human human race. We we had a a difficult year, um as Dr. McCrilla said, this was this was global, this is this wasn't just Auburn. But I think we are gonna make it to the finish line and I'm I'm glad to hear that your teachers are are dragging you and pushing you across that finish line. Doing whatever that they can to help and and I don't expect um any different from them, um having been around the district for a while, I know how dedicated they are. But I think we're all gonna come out of this um a lot stronger and I think it's gonna make next year all that more special. Um returning in September, for those who are moving on to college, I just think, I just think September is gonna be really nice. People are gonna look forward to actually getting back to school as much as we are looking forward to that summer vacation.
Definitely, I would have to agree, I know that right now is just personally for me is like, as well as my classmates. A stressful time, I know that myself as well as pretty much every other junior out there is taking their SATs on Saturday. So we've got our eyes set on that and just getting our work in for the year, so it's definitely a stressful time period. But like I said, our teachers are doing everything in their power, just like you said, you know, if we can't just walk across at this point. They're just gonna drag us, I guess, but I mean. I guess what matters is that we make it there, so.
Well, we're we're pulling for you and um wish you all all the best and hopefully we'll we'll see you again soon. If you don't get caught up with any plumbing accidents or or tennis matches.
I know, it's been, it's been a rough few months, okay?
Well, summer vacation is right around the corner, any comments for Jasmine?
Don't let him give you any guff, Jasmine, don't let him.
I, no, I'm I'm turning away from my past aggressive traits, you know, I've turned our past. The pathway, so it's okay.
She's gonna be number one next year, number one seat as a senior, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Excellent, well, thank you so much, as always, a wonderful report and.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you soon, take care Jasmine.
Alright, take care, thank you so much.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Okay, what a great kid. And we now move back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um just uh continuing on with our COVID update that we we usually provide. Um as the community knows, uh case counts continue to go down, um they continue to hold steady here in the district. Uh we see between zero and one case per day, um again, that continues to be a positive trend. Um although the restrictions were lifted by the governor on Saturday, May twenty ninth, um Desi's most recent guidance from two days prior. Um has masking in school um still, uh as well as on buses through this year. And then we expect there'll be additional mask guidance coming for the fall, um and so when that comes, um we will obviously pass it along. Um but uh yeah, so we'll we'll see, um we'll see where that goes, but um. You know, and we'll keep an eye on on you know, on upticks, you know, as we continue to do and and you know, discuss as needed. But um but so far, you know, we continue to trend in the right direction, which is great.
So through the chair, I actually have one question that was actually raised to me by another parent, so we can't take credit for this, but.
Sure.
Uh one of our neighbor's friends has, they've actually started calling mask breaks, brain breaks. Which if you think about it, these kids are not used to ever having a chance to just go outside and clear their heads between classes, so. If possible, and I I don't know enough about, you know, how many minutes of instruction time we need or how to work this in. But it makes, it seems like it's a reasonable request to see if, no matter what happens with masking or COVID or anything next year, if. If we can try to take away some of the positive things that might have happened through this year and, you know. If we think that the teachers would be amenable to that and that it's doable in buildings, because it makes sense to me, I need a break in the middle of my workday and.
True.
I I can see where I can do this as well, so I just wanted to pass along my feedback.
Thank you, yeah, I know, I mean, I I through the chair, I think, you know, I think you raise a great point, I I you know. Globally, I think when we talk about what are the positives, you know, that we can take away, um you know, this this may be one of them, especially with the older kids. You know, we have recess up until, you know, fifth grade, um but then, you know, you get to middle and high school and it just.
Go, go, go.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, you know, maybe recess is appropriate, but but I I definitely hear what you're saying, um you know, in terms of, you know, having that that bit of downtime.
Just get my hair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if I might add, when we did it in sixth grade, we felt it was a good chance for the kids coming in from two separate parts of town to get to know each other. In a in a friendly way as opposed to just a classroom.
Even the social, yeah, the socialization, that setting to do that.
Yeah. So we. Yeah, we did that break, it worked out great. I think Mr. Handfield did too.
I did.
Some strong I've been going on here.
But yes, we'll 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 raise it and we'll see, yeah, we'll see.
Um through the chair, um all the schools are air conditioned, so we don't have to worry, certain subjects worrying about it getting really hot for these kids in masks.
Sure.
But we're all air conditioned.
Yeah, all of our, that's a great question too, so through the chair, all of our um our buildings um do have final control um units. Um the high school has tr- more traditional air conditioning. Um the middle school has um a a humidification reduction system. It was part of the the green initiative that we were able to get a lot of, you know, credits, financial credits back as part of that project. And then our other buildings have have splits um that have been put in, so yeah, so it's 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 um. Yeah, so we 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 should be good there. Um we should be good there, we're fortunate in that respect.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so um graduation is right around the corner on Friday evening, June fourth. Whether or not it stays June fourth, we don't know, um if you've been watching the weather, and I'm watching it blow in a little bit. Um it's it's not looking too good uh on Friday, uh with thunderstorms and and chances of inclement weather, so. Um Mr. DeLongchamp and I were speaking uh this afternoon often um about uh plans, I mean, we're, there were plans in place to obviously go to Saturday. And it's not Saturday, Sunday, um so that'll be a a to be determined, um whether or not we still are go on on Friday night. Um but if not, we'll go to uh we'll go Saturday or Sunday. Obviously, with the lifting of the restrictions, um outdoor gathering limits, spacing, sanitation protocols have been easier eliminated. But we will still continue to have those, you know, in our graduation ceremony, um families will still be seated in pods. Uh but last year, we had them ten feet apart and they were like from South Creek Street almost to the Phil hockey field. We're gonna collapse that ten foot spacing down to about five. Um and uh we're able to extend two more tickets per graduate, so uh eight eight folks can come uh per graduate um and be part of the graduation, which is nice.
Yeah.
Um fortunately, the weather may not cooperate, but um and like we did last year, you know, we'll continue, we'll have orderly arrival and dismissal procedures and. Um you know, working with the Auburn police and things like that, so so excited, excited, but um a little. A little scared right now of the weather, so so we'll see, we'll see how that goes.
Well, our students have been battle tested, so they they probably expect something like this.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little thunder and lightning and downpours on their graduation day, right, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, back in the old days.
Pretty much sums up the whole year, really.
Yeah, I mean, that was a rite of passage in the old days before, you know, because we never graduated inside, it was always outside. And then, I mean, I was caught in two years playing in the band, one year we were aboard, everybody sprinted to the old gym and it was like a bandbox and it was gross.
Hmm.
And then our graduation year, we just finished, ceremony was over and you could see the clouds coming over two ninety and then boom, down it came, so. You know, it's just par for the course this time of year when you do outside, but um you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Well, looking forward to it either way. Alright, moving on.
Thank you, uh Mr. Chair, so last uh meeting we were together, I I had shared with you some of the the global themes that came out of um. Survey to families um in January and then I I told you that I'd be putting together um an entry, kind of report of entry finding. Um it's about twenty pages long, um but don't let that scare you. Yes, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go through it um all, I'm just gonna just kind of hit the highlights, so. Um there's an introduction there basically, so if someone on the streets reading this and they don't know me, um they would be able to see that, um a table of contents. Um and then obviously, everything is predicated on our mission statement, our vision statement and our core values. And then um just to orient people to what the four, the the five rather, major themes are of our strategic plan. Um and then I went through each area and just quickly highlighted some areas. And then I put what I'm calling considerations at the bottom, which are just that, they're not edicts, they're not, I'm saying this has to happen or. It's consider based on what I have seen and it will generate conversation moving forward. Before I got into um the uh the the. The the different standards uh in the strategic plan, I did start with the discussion about physical plant and the operating budget. Because I think those are the two areas that really drive everything else. Um the town has been phenomenal in the last fifteen years with their responsiveness to our school buildings. Um you know, with the new high school, the new middle school, the substantial renovations to Swanson Road. Um but obviously, you know, if you drive by Bryn Mawr or you drive by Fagachog or you sit in this building here. At some point, there's gonna need to be a discussion about what do we do, you know, PK to two um in town. And again, I don't want anybody listening to this or hearing this on our broadcast saying, Dr. Handfield said we need to build three new buildings tomorrow. And driving tax bills, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, it would be remiss of me not to say that we need to sit down and have some sort of a plan. You know, whether it's keep the existing buildings, you know, whether it's do something else, um you know, and I know there's a lot going on in the town. But I just put it out there for consideration that long term, we have to think about, you know, the viability of of those buildings. More immediate, um the traffic concerns at at Bryn Mawr and Swanson Road are very well known. Um and we've we, it was magnified this year because of COVID and so we've we've taken some steps to hopefully make that a little bit more palatable to folks this year. But it's an issue that we can, will continue to look, need to look at as we move forward. Um so from kind of a facility standpoint, that that's where we are and of course, and I didn't mention in here and I should have, but. Um Mr. McCrillis just jogged my burp, my memory, the the continued up updates and H VAC work that we're doing in all of our buildings, um. You know, that will continue as well. In terms of the operating budget, you know, we receive amazing uh community support. Um whether it, you know, town administration, you know, they they always go above minimum net school spending requirements, can't say that's the case everywhere. In fact, it's rare to see that, you know, in places, um you know, so we we've enjoyed tremendous financial support, obviously. You know, this, we're we're ending a fiscal year where we took a bit of a hit because the state didn't fund us at a level that we thought. Um again, COVID related and moving into next year, um because of a a shortfall in in enrollment. We're seeing, you know, kind of a shortage on what we would have expected for chapter seventy. So within all of that, we have to navigate the school district being down about eight hundred thousand dollars in our foundation budget. And the the important part of that is with on top of your foundation budget, as I think everybody knows. Your percentage increases for subsequent years are based off of that, so we're starting at a deficit. Well, we're already in a deficit, but we're gonna start at a deficit going into next budget season, down about eight hundred thousand where we normally would be. Now, will the chapter seventy come back due to enrollment? It could, I can't prognosticate that for sure, I think it will. Um you know, and will the town, you know, continue to, you know, to do their due diligence and be, you know, and be fair with us? Absolutely, and probably then some, you know, um but that's something that we have to keep an eye on, you know, we have to, we have to be very. Um prudent, you know, financially as we move forward, we have to find ways to um be efficient in 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 places that maybe we haven't thought about being efficient before. Um so that we can continue to um, you know, to put the product out there that we have, but I'm confident we can do it. I'm not saying that to alarm people, I'm just saying those are the realities, you know, that we faced this year and those are the realities that we're gonna face moving ahead for the next couple of years, at least. Um you know, as we continue to rebound from this. Um in terms of what goes on in. Um, in terms of what goes on in district with our budget, I I will, you know, commend Mrs. Wizwicki. Um, you know, we have sound accounting practices, we have sound um auditing, uh you know, uh results that come come back when we. And and it's done voluntarily, um and so that's good to know, that we're following uh things as we should be doing. Um, and if there are any um, you know, areas, you know, for for kind of improvement or. Uh what have you, we do that, and you know, those things, Mrs. Wizwicki said earlier this year. Um, you know, she had brought to you the findings of a of an audit, and there were some things on the state level that had changed. And we were technically out of compliance, but it wasn't anything to do with the other public schools per se, it was just, things changed and. You know, we're just in the process of catching up, um so we're in good shape in that respect. Um, so moving forward, you know, we continue to do, you know, what we're doing, um being mindful of budget. Um, we wanna make sure that we're creating budgets that are providing access to everything that we have here for all of our families, you know, without barriers. Um, financial or otherwise, and then the other piece that that came up um earlier in the school year was a question about the procurement practices. Um, or lack thereof, uh for items that are are exempt under chapter thirty B. Mrs. Wizwicki and I were talking and and we don't think it 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 would hurt to evaluate. Um, you know, maybe creating sort of a modified chapter thirty B process. Um, for things, you know, such as school photos, for things such as yearbooks, for things such as caps and gowns or or other services. Um, not saying it would be a full thirty B procurement process, but we could put together a scope of services like some schools do. To make sure that we're getting, you know, what um we want our families to get, and that they're getting what they should be getting for their money. Um, it wouldn't necessarily follow thirty B procurement in the sense that you would go with the thirty B rules and regs. But the principals would still have those, the discretion, you know, to to make those decisions, but, you know, I think. Sometimes those are the things we kind of lose, um you know, because there's so much else going on. But there are financial ramifications to that for our families and for our students, and um I think it's worth doing our due diligence to, you know, maybe try to look at that. Moving forward.
So you would look at that with the help of all the principals that would be involved?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so for example, you know, we we had solicited some school districts um and and asked them, you know, does anybody, you know, even though we don't have to. Does anybody go out to, you know, procurement, you know, in a thirty B fashion, you know, for school photos, for yearbooks, um for other services that. Um, you know, classes, say at the high school, you know, they'll have activities and things like that. And so, you know, we've got some examples from some of the school districts where it's a scope of services. Um, you know, they seek, you know, people, you know, they seek interest, and um, you know, ultimately, it's the principals who make those final decisions. But at least it's been a good look, or at least a good attempt to look for, you know. Uh providers of those goods and services to make sure that we're getting, you know, what we should be getting, and our families are getting what they should be getting. So um that was really, that's really the only the other, only other big part, you know, the financial pieces, you know, is to look at that. Um, you know, there's a lot of, you know, kind of ancillary money that goes along with school activities, right, and so just wanna make sure that they're getting what they should be getting. Go from there, so. Yeah, so so we'll see, um we'll see how it turns out, um you know, but at least it, I think it just bears a look. So with those um, those two pieces, you know, kind of laid out, um you know, the rest of this, and I I'll I'll go through it, um you know, kind of. Not quickly, but certainly I won't go through every piece of it, so in teaching and learning, um you know, obviously, we have a an amazing dedicated staff. Jasmine spoke to that just a little while ago, um I've seen that in all buildings, you know, they're they're pulling each other and the kids across the finish line. You know, our teachers are a hundred percent um appropriately licensed, which is terrific, um and ninety seven percent of them hold at least one professional license. Uh ninety three pers- um percent or ninety four percent of our teachers are teaching in their field of expertise, and there's really two reasons for that, um. Uh why it's not a hundred percent, we have our guidance counselors who aren't really teachers, doing um classes with our students, whether it's. You know, seminar at the high school or social emotional things at at the elementary schools, they're they're teaching. And then we also have the ability um from the state, where teachers can teach twenty percent outside of their certified area. Um, that's just something that if a school gets into a pickle and you need to cover a class, and you only have someone, you know, certified in English, but they can do a little math on the side. Um, so every once in a while, we have a little bit of that going on, but overall, like I said, very um, you know, a very solid, caring. Dedicated professional staff um unequivocally. Then I just broke down um the staffing data by race, ethnicity and gender, um you know, you can see there, it's probably not a surprise, you know, we're mostly white staff. Um, and um the majority are are women, uh especially, you know, at the elementary levels, again, not a surprise. Um, and then when you turn the page, you look at the demographics of our students. And um they are a little bit different uh than what our teaching staff looks like, and so you see, um you know, about eighty. Percent of our students are are white, um and the other twenty percent um are, you know, another another race, and so. I only raised that issue because as we're starting to look at diversity, equity and and inclusion issues in the districts. Um, you know, we wanna make sure to the best of our ability, and that's probably the highlighted recommendation here, is that our recruitment practices. Are are reaching, you know, every targeted population that is in education. So we can make sure that we have a very diverse, as diverse a a talent pool as possible. Um, so that was a in in interesting findings, I was going through some of um some of our data. When we look at our student data, um our English learners, our students of disability status and our economic disadvantaged students. They create one subgroup called high needs. And something that sometimes people forget, we're a district of twenty five or twenty six hundred, we have eight hundred and eighty six kids. That fall into that high needs category, um as you can see there, um that fifty five is is roughly the number of. English language learners uh in our district, we have approximately two hundred and seventy two, um we have a disability status of some sort. And then five hundred and fifty nine, five hundred and fifty nine economically disadvantaged, that's a huge number. Um, I won't go into all of the potential issues, you know, that families and and students that that have something, you know, an economically disadvantaged situation. What that means, um but, you know, we have work to do with with kids, our our most vulnerable population, you know. Uh and sometimes people, they they don't see that if you don't point it out, you know, um it's a staggering number. So as we go into teaching and learning, of course, we wanna look at the achievement patterns of all of our kids. Um, and we want everyone to be doing their very, very best, but we wanna really focus on our kids who are in that high needs category, because. What you'll see, and again, um this is part of me not going through it all, but when you look at standardized testing performance, um. And again, not that standardized testing performance is the end all be all by any stretch, but those groups um uh. Are consistently twenty to thirty points below um our, you know, our our students who don't fall into those categories. So um that's something that that we need to really just keep our eyes on, and as I said here, make sure we have the scaffolds in place. To make sure everyone is succeeding, but especially those who may be more vulnerable than others. From a curriculum standpoint, um you know, at the elementary schools, we have our primary curriculum vehicles, our Go Math and Wonders. Um, those are our current math and literacy programs, um will be due to reevaluate those programs in another year. Yeah, next year, um and those come with a significant price tag, um you know, we've been through a number of of different programs, um. And with, I think, mixed results, I think would be fair to say, and in terms of our happiness with them, but we need to make sure that. Whatever we're gonna do moving forward, um that we're not changing something just because to change it. Um, we have to really just be uh mindful of of what we're doing, not only in terms of price, but we have to be mindful in doing in terms of. What it's gonna do to our parents, who ultimately are home with, you know, helping their kids, and you know, changing a math series or or reading series. Math probably more than anything, it really can just be frustrating at home, and when you add all of those things together, it can almost be counterproductive. To what you're trying to do in terms of increasing, you know, students' abilities, so um we have. Continue to generate science and steam related activities, um you know, Project Lead the Way is something that we see at the high school. Um, we have curriculum at all grade levels that's appropriate, um at the middle school, we're we're starting to look at. This idea of learning to read versus reading to learn, so our kids learn to read, right, up through grade five. But as we get into more content specialized areas in middle school and high school, you know, can kids read like a historian? Can they read like a mathematician, can they read like a scientist? Um, and because that's where they're gleaning a lot of their information from, is they have to read the texts, whether it's online, whether it's articles, whatever, whatever it is. Um, and it starts right about that that fifth, sixth grade area, so, you know, we're looking at some things there. At the high school, you know, the the curriculum is very robust, we have nineteen AP courses, uh that's there, um everything is uh. Is aligned with the state uh frameworks, our graduation rate and our dropout rate are excellent. Um, and as our students, you know, as I say here, our students do a variety of things, from Ivy League schools. To technical schools, to everywhere in between, um students go off to the military, the world of work. Um, they're ready to go and do great things no matter where they go, when they leave us. Um, social emotional learning, that's something that really came to the fore in twenty eighteen, uh but we were kind of already ahead of it. We uh have our first steps, our second step, we have PBIS, Restorative Justice and three sixty five Z. Um, is some of the programs going um in our buildings now, and in the coming year, um as we welcome students back full time. We'll be looking to uh do additional social emotional uh programs and potentially um. Additional staff there, uh based on some grant funding that we we're in line to receive. Again, I mentioned standardized testing performance, so I'm not gonna go through all of that, um one of the things that I will, I will tell you that's interesting too is. Um, I I picked up grades eleven and twelve at the high school from last year, and this three, there were three hundred and sixty total students. And of those three hundred and sixty total students, um sixty four point four, or almost sixty five percent. Completed at least one advanced placement course, with many completing um additional. And again, as you look down, you'll see broken out by gender, and you'll see it broken down by some of the subgroups that I've mentioned, you know. We wanna try and get our every single kid to have at least one AP experience before they leave, so we've got some work to do there. But that backs up, right, because we've gotta put the scaffolding in place to get our kids, you know, to that point. Um, it's gonna take some time. It's gonna take some time, but it doesn't mean we can't do it. Again, it's that the whole continuous improvement piece. Uh, when we talk about technology, um one of the biggest things with technology is where the district has been blessed, we we have robust technology. Um, we have in six through twelve in the buildings, but now we have one to one PK to five on top of our existing. So how do we leverage that as we come back into the buildings in ways that we didn't leverage it before, because we didn't have it? The other part of that is, how do we prepare long term for the financial impact of now having. Almost double the amount of devices, because they're gonna need to be replaced, and we do have a capital project, or excuse me, a capital plan. To replace, you know, um our iPads, but it was only set at a six through twelve level, while the pandemic brought us, as we know, another six hundred plus. So how do we, you know, move forward and create a responsible plan to make sure that technology stays up to date? We need to consider that. Um, you know, we have learning platforms in place, we have CSAR at the elementary schools, we have Google Classroom. Um, at the intermediate, we use School G six through twelve. Um, you know, we wanna look at those and and see, you know, is there a way to streamline some of those platforms, because I also know. From a parental standpoint, you know, if you have to manage three different platforms with your child, that's a lot, it's a real lot. Um, and we heard that loud and clear um last spring and and through this year as well. Um, when we move on to health, wellness and safety, you know, one of the biggest things for our kids and and actually, Mr. Desto hit the nail on the head in a meeting today. When we were talking about this, you know, the whole idea of of, we almost have to spend a day or two when we bring them back in the fall. To kind of uh reacquaint them with how you socialize, how you normally function with each other. Um, you know, how you communicate, how you do all of these different things, because in sixteen months since we've been out, um you know, he he noticed. The the large amount of need for that at that level, um and Mr. DeLong Champ would echo that. Um, maybe not so much at the elementary levels, but still a need. We're also really concerned about psychological safety when we come back, and we're really talking about bullying, okay? Uh, we, you know, back in two thousand twelve when bullying first started, uh and we had that rip, and all the attention came to bullying in schools because of the Phoebe Prince case. Um, you know, everybody, we got, we got on and did what we're supposed to do, we created our plan, we put in, you know, uh. Mechanisms and buildings to report and to, you know, discipline and to uh mediate. I think like anything else, you know, all of that's still there, but it's, but it 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 almost kind of like takes a backseat a little bit. Because then there's something else that's coming along, I think what we're finding is that is still very much an issue. And we need to really come back to that issue again, not just in person, but cyber cyber bullying. Um, so we need to, we need to kind of look at that, because we need our kids to feel safe when they come to school, um. Physical safety, I mean, we've got tremendous relationships with fire, police, right? Um, we've got school related plans, we've got emergency plans that cover any possible thing that could potentially happen, except for a pandemic, but now we have that. Right, now we have, yep, now we, yep, that's appendix ZZ, so now we have that, um. But, you know, continuing to look at those plans, um making sure that when our kids come back, in addition to fire drills. You know, what is it that we need to be drilling and and discussing at age appropriate levels, you know, in our buildings with our kids, unfortunately. You know, um school shootings across the country, um shootings in general across the country had disappeared because of covid. Now it seems like you can't turn on the news and you're seeing something, school, social, um so.
It's scary.
It is, it's very scary, and it just reminds us that we have to always be vigilant, and so as we keep our eyes on the future. We need to make sure that we're reacquainting ourselves um with those things, we also need to make sure that we're starting to talk with our kids about, you know, opiates. I mean, you know, that's, that's the, this year, again, it's the leading cause of of death among people in Massachusetts, you know, drug related. Um, we need to talk about vaping with our kids, we need to really get our arms around that, um you know, that is an issue. Um, along with tobacco products and and alcohol and all those other things, we need to get our arms around, you know, healthy lifestyles for our kids. And and really kind of re-energizing those discussions, so we have a lot to do there. Um, you know, the social emotional needs um of our faculty and staff, their wellness and safety, we were talking about that today. That, you know, this, that we're coming out of covid, yes, there is still, um you know, there's still a lot of psychological damage. And uh, you know, impact on 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 everybody, and we have to figure out how to, how to, how to. Check for that, tease it out, and do our best to help folks, um you know, as we get back to hopefully some semblance of normal. Um, you know, and then community partnerships uh in in transitions, um you know, those are things that are pretty standard fare. Um, you know, again, we enjoy amazing town support, you know, um from all of our town groups, our community support, you know, whether it's, you know, uh. You know, Auburn Youth and Family, you know, helping us with counseling at the high school, or or it's uh, you know, Park and Shop, you know, offering an opportunity for some of our. Encore interns, um you know, to get some work done, um you know. So much community support, and we really look forward to getting our kids back out into the community, um as we get into the fall and covid gets better and better. And then transitions, you know, it's like anything else, um you know, our, what we're doing to to meet the transitional needs of families, you know, are are they still impactful? Um, do we need to look at um certain things to welcome new families to the district that, you know, that we don't currently have? Um, and I'm sure there's a million other things, you know, that that need to be addressed, but um, you know, overall. You know, we're in really good shape, but there's still a lot to be done, and and that's really, um you know, the 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 point of this document. Is to say, hey, we do a great job, but continuous improvement, there are some things on the horizon, short and long term, and um. Now this will be aligned with the the strategic plan, and then any alterations, you know, will be made as necessary, but. Um, the quick abridged version of that is that I kind of looked ahead, and um we line up pretty good, so to Mrs. Harrington's point or question. Um, at our last meeting about, you know, are we behind, um no, and actually, we're probably ahead, um after reviewing this and seeing it and writing and. Being able to put some thoughts together and then comparing it, we're in pretty good shape, so um this will be the work, some of the work over the summer. Um, but yeah, so, so this is available online, um anybody at home can read it, um comment, contact me, contact us. And we'd be happy to talk about it.
Excellent, any comments?
Uh, yeah, so a couple things, through the chair, I I love the idea of teaching kids how to act, it was, um, there's um. Uh, at, I think, third grade, um one of the girls ran into one of the boys, the girl falls on the ground, and he was so upset. I made her fall, I didn't mean to, I said, well, did you help her up, he's like, no, we're not allowed to touch, we're in a pandemic, you know. And like, it's like little things like that you would never thought about, um last year, so I love that we're doing that. The only other thing, and I know we spoke briefly this week, and I just wanna say, because I've been getting a lot of calls to publicly advocate for a transition this year. So that the kids can have closure at the end of the year, know who their teacher is before they leave for the summer. So that the kids can have closure at the end of the year, know who their teacher is before they leave for the summer. Um I know that the step up day was probably gonna, we can't bus kids obviously from school to school, but. I'm sure from, you know, one to two, maybe we could, three to four, maybe zooming further. Just so that um we can have some type of closure for these kids this year and they can have familiar faces for the following. Um but yeah, I think it's great, I think we've come a long way.
Any other comments or questions?
Through the chair, I just I completely agree with my combo point, uh particularly with the socialization part. I I think you might need more than a day, I have to be honest, um only because there is that uncertainty with, you know, what can I do? What what is okay and even just talking through, even just conversation styles. Because they're like, well, I'm not supposed to talk during my math break because then particles are flying, well, what do you do in math break, we have circle time.
So so. Or drinking water, I can't drink water because it's until I have my math break, so like they're gonna have some confusion. If we're able to knock on wood, we don't have masks in the fall, but.
Great, and 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 same with the transitions too, I've got a lot of questions about that and feedback about how. How are we gonna do that, even questions about how is my kid gonna get their blue card and.
Yeah.
Whenever they, whenever they.
Yeah, and and through the chair, I mean, those are great points, I mean, I I guess as I was saying to somebody today, we figured it out last year when we couldn't, you know, be in school. Um and and I hear you loud and clear, we just have to see what the principles are, um you know, one of the things that I think. And I get it, I totally get it, um but as people are seeing the world open back up again, there's there's still. You know, whether it's economics, whether it's within the buildings, you know, whatever, there's there's still some lag. You know, in terms of where we are and where we are, uh so um where we'd like to be, so we we can certainly raise that. Um you know, with the buildings, um and and see, you know, if we can do something. Um if it's not a full blown transition per se, some sort of closure um for the kids. We just, I just have to dipstick, we just have to dipstick with the principles and see what what their likeness is, you know, around that idea.
Even if it's just a list of, you know, this is your teacher and this is your class, so that maybe over the summer.
Sure.
These kids can maybe get together.
Sure. Sure, no, it like I said, great point, great point, um so we will, uh yeah, we'll work on that and see what we can do.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have a comment, um the health and wellness part of it, I mean. My family has had a personal experience with the problems of vaping and I just think it's. We've somehow extinguished cigarettes with kids, like if we can somehow get a grip on our handle on this problem, it is. Rampant and it's just, um it's more common for kids to be vaping than to not be vaping, so. I I don't know, you know, like what we can do or I don't know.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I mean, it it's it's a. I I think it's one of these things where it's it 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 just comes back to education, right? You it's just gotta be education, education, education and and you make a great point, you know, it it's not, no, it's not just a day. Of, okay, we're gonna do socialization training for a day and now it's done, now, okay, go socialize. Um it's gonna be a recurring theme, right? We have to, we have to revisit that throughout the school year. Um you know, we've got to put, we've got to look at our curriculum and we've got to look at our activities and and hopefully going back to a more normalized school year. Um you know, next year, you know, we can start hitting hard, you know, opioids and vaping and. And you know, the alcohol piece is still there and I agree with you, the cigarettes have become somewhat passe a little bit, so is chewing tobacco. Um but it's interesting, like they come in waves, you know, I mean, chewing tobacco was big ten fifteen years ago. Then it died down and then we had a little bit of an issue with it at the high school five years ago. And so it's just, it's this constant kind of discussion about healthy lifestyles and what we're doing. It it's about including families in the conversation so that the messages are consistent, you know, and and reinforced. But uh no, I agree with you, uh because the other part of it is, and it's just like feeding our kids during a pandemic. You know, they need to be healthy, right? And so if they're doing unhealthy things, it doesn't help, um you know, it doesn't help their their plate as we're trying to get them. You know, to be their very best selves in the classroom.
No, I do wanna add, sorry, that COVID did affect the whole thing, I mean.
Oh yeah, oh absolutely.
You know, the whole focus shifted from health and well-being to survival and how are we gonna. Live through Zoom, you know, for the next year and a half, so I mean, I'm not blaming. The teachers or the schools or anything like that, I just think, like you just said, going forward, if we can bring that. To the forefront a little more than it has the past year, that would be.
Well, uh yeah, and I. And the other part of it is, you know, typically we see our kids in schools more than their parents do. And so when we think about the amount of time that we have with them, especially as they get, you know, into, you know, grade six through twelve. You know, we see them more than than you see them, I know that that was the case with my own two. Um you know, they they became like shadow figures, uh because they were running here, there and everywhere doing different things. And it wasn't cool to engage with mom and dad about anything. Um you know, and uh and and that won't ever change, but we still have to find a way to to try to. To get the message across and and to get our kids involved and stuff and, you know, it it just, it it starts from there this big, you know, so.
Through the chair to that point, because they have all been trapped in their houses for a year, I feel like.
They're gonna go crazy.
Either because the parents have been cramming it down their throats, they're supposed to be happy and drink their water or do whatever. They need to do, they're gonna go the other way or they haven't gotten any messages about help, so that that's a unique challenge, I don't think.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree, I agree, so it's just like I said, there's there's a lot to circle back to the earlier portion of the evening. There's a lot of work to do in a lot of areas.
Um all great points and um nice presentation, it was uh. It was part of that world world cafe and and there was a lot of great brainstorming there and 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 I would agree with you when you say that. I think we're we're a little bit ahead of the game, I also agree with um Miss Harrington that we have, you know, we have some work to do in. And various departments and and that being one of them, you know, the health health and welfare of the students. I just have one question regarding that, it have there been, you know, with the uptick in in vaping and 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 such behaviors? Have there been any changes to discipline um as far as the consequences or any handbook changes or anything like that where? You know, obviously after a year of being in and out of school, hybrid, you know, weeks off here, months off here. The last thing we wanna do is keep students out of school, just wondering, you know, regarding that, have there been any?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting that you, it's an interesting question that you raise, um you know. In the last few years and it started a couple of years ago with with passage of of chapter two twenty two upon Beacon Hill, you know, about, you know, schools. You know, expulsion powers and and things like that, it 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 generated a larger discussion about, you know, what does keeping kids at home. Necessarily do or prove, right? How many days do you have to be out of school before you realize, okay, I shouldn't have done that, right? Um and so, you you know, this is something that I think we're all still still trying to reconcile is, you know, the behavior that. I mean, unless it's a danger in the building or a danger to somebody else or or whatever and we can't have you. Um that's one thing, but on matters like this, um I know, you know, at the high school level, for example. You know, it'd it'd be like a hybrid, it would be like, all right, look, you did this, so your penalty is, you know, either a day out or, you know, a day in school suspension, whatever. But when you come back or when you're in the school suspension, you know, here's this assignment that you have to do on on vaping and. Reading about it and educating yourself and doing these different prompts and things like that, um almost like a cessation per se. So yeah, I mean, I think we're starting to move in those directions, I think we're also starting to understand that, you know, when we hear it from parents, I used to hear it from parents a lot. Well, it's great that you suspended him or her, but now what, I'm not home, you know, no, it's home and so that it's like a vacation.
Yep.
And I get that uh to a point, part of it still is would be the point of responsibility, but I also understand the fact that. Again, me days home for something, I mean, it it. You know, it just, it defeats the purpose, you know, in some respects of what we're trying to do, so.
Yeah, I'm certainly not suggesting that, I I I I would agree with um the state findings that really we don't want our students at home, especially not. Someone who's gonna go home and potentially vape for the whole three days that they're at school.
Right, unfortunately, that's kind of the.
I'm thinking more along the lines of, you know, um activities that that they may be a part of, whether it's sports or clubs or, and again. You totally take them away from that, what are they gonna do? They're gonna go engage in the bad behavior again, but I'm just talking, you know, in incrementally if we could take a.
Yeah, I mean, it it is, I mean, discipline, you know, I in in the schools, you know, is definitely, you know, unless it's so egregious. Um you know, it's it's definitely a progressive type of a system, um you know, you know, you speak to athletics in particular. You know, the M I A A has their own sanctions, you know, that comes with, you know, involvement and things like that. Um but yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I I know this year, you know, I am speaking with a couple of, you know, the principals. We've had issues that have come up and it's and it was more of a a brainstorming session about, all right, what's the best course of action for this child, you know, because one size doesn't always fit all. Um you know, some child, if you say you're suspended for a day, that's all, you'll never have a problem with them again. Other kids, it'd be like, so, like, I'll take twenty five, like, I don't care, you know?
Yeah.
And so it's it's trying to get into the psychology of each one of these individual kids and then look at the offense and look at the history and. You know, go from there, so um you know, it 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 can kind of be like fencing in the ocean sometimes. Trying to calibrate, you know, what's appropriate, I mean, just think of yourself as a parent, you know, the struggle that you have there. Um you know, but it it but, you know, doesn't mean we don't try, so.
No, and and you're right, it certainly should be individualized, um you know, the the care of all of these students. And that goes to something that we talked about, you know, at at earlier meetings and and that was the social emotional aspect. And and the possibility of, you know, school adjustment councils or additional um school adjustment councils, that type of thing. Um if that's something that that's feasible, um and that's something that we need to to look at in the future, as you said. Some students, that that may be just what they need, not an expulsion, not a suspension, not being kicked off the sports team, but they just might. Um need that person to talk to and that person that they they need to talk to may have a line at the door already, so if that's something that we need to look at. Certainly bring that back to the committee.
Well, and thank you, and through the chair, I I will say that we've been, we've been looking at that very issue, um. Uh it it because it's really, you know, the the focus is, we need to get them as young as we possibly can get them, you know, Doctor Chamberlain and I were talking about. You know, it's remarkable when we think about, you know, some children that that have kind of gone sideways a little bit. Um you know, that we could tell when they were in first grade or second grade or third grade, that there was something, there was something there. That we needed to pick and probe at and and get at and if we can get them at those points. Then maybe, you know, we're not sending them out to an out of district placement, you know, in grade six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. You know, maybe we're, you know, uh re, you know, kind of getting them rehabbed, if you will, and getting them back out, you know, into the regular population before something. You know, so so that is something that we're talking about and discussing, um you know, how can we do that, like I said, there's some grant monies. Um that are coming our way, um some mostly earmarked um for social emotional, you know, type of things. Um but we're still in the process of reviewing that, but yeah, I mean, it's it's definitely on the radar.
Excellent, thank you, any other questions or comments?
Um okay, we now move on to new business. Thank you, Mister Chair, um I'm sure there are eighth grade graduation plans, we just don't have them from Mister Desto quite yet. Um so, um.
I can tell you.
So maybe you already know what they are, so I don't have to tell you, because I mean.
Yeah, I think we probably all have a pretty good idea of what's going on.
All right, good, so we can just go right over that, so that's great, so I'm glad that you.
What, you have eighth graders, all three of you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh wow.
Two, two classes at a time, yeah, so.
They are, yeah. Yeah.
So.
Awesome.
I don't know those familiar. So you're gonna have high school students next year?
Yeah, I know, all of them.
Woo.
Mrs. Coffin, did you care to speak of um on behalf of the the middle school and the grad, I'm sure you studied the. I took a quick look this morning, I just know I'm going at eight thirty.
Well, there should be five. Yes, they're gonna be, I believe there are five sessions, um and they're doing two classes at a time. I think the cap is two hundred and twenty four people in the gymnasium at a time, so each.
Oh wow.
Gym will get to bring three people and they're trying to make it as close to the ceremony as possible as they did before, but. Obviously with awards, I'm not really sure how that could be, but.
Yeah, no, that's that's great and thank you, I the, yeah, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna um to mistake what Mister Desto's plans were. But you're capturing them quite nicely, so um any 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 uh misunderstandings?
Did I miss any?
I'll just blame you.
No, I don't, no, I don't think so, it should be a smooth um head and out.
Yeah, and through the chair, I mean, I will say to you that that one of the things that we really tried, that we're trying hard to do is, you know, as much as the drive through. Kind of graduation was nice and it was thought given to that, it's about the personalization and it's about bringing people together and and so. That's really what they're trying to accomplish there and I I think they have a plan that that makes sense and and works. Um so, yeah, so, thank you.
I think I think it'll work out nicely, it's, you know, I of course, would like to have them all together and 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 one gymnasium and be able to celebrate each and every student, you know. As a community, as a school community, but it's just not in the cards for this year.
Yeah, this year.
And I think my own students will be thankful because I'll be able to get back to them within an hour or so, so. Or maybe they won't be thankful, I guess you have to.
That's why I figured yourself.
I know, that's why I second guessed it. As far as um the the program of studies, since the packet came out a little bit late and it's it's been a busy week, if we could just put that off, there's some questions that. That I have returned that could could be at, um is it the sixteenth or meeting next?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about that on the sixteenth if that's okay with everyone.
Sounds good, it's getting late, you're right.
So moving on. Auburn Chamber of Commerce, Dr. Newfield?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair, um so we have, um uh well, I should say last week, uh we had the opportunity, um. It was kind of a hybrid format, uh but as as the Auburn Chamber does, they're they're tremendous uh allies and partners with us as the at the Auburn Public Schools. And as they do every year, they award uh quite a bit of scholarship money, um and so listed here are the recipients, um. Stephen Lucas Scholarship and the uh Major David Broderer Scholarship, uh both are three thousand dollars apiece. Uh were awarded to Alicia Creelman and Mia Del Strido. And then Zoe Picard, Maeve Cahill, Connor Haller and Emily Dupuis, Miranda Corto and Samantha Anna Saskis. Uh both received, are all received scholarships of fifteen hundred dollars, um so we had, um. We had a a a nice little um kind of ceremony, um Kelly, um Creswell Sullivan, um A H S graduate. Um now, um corresponded for Fox Boston News, um was the guest speaker, uh she was a recipient of uh.
Oh wow.
Of one of these scholarships back in the day and she talked about how it helped her, uh you know, get through Syracuse and journalism school and. And um she shared some some anecdotes and some interesting uh insight from her time here in Auburn. Um and uh yeah, she was great, she was great, so um we thanked the chamber and and as it says here, they've given almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in scholarships. To our kids and um really appreciate that.
That's great, thank you and congratulations to those students. Moving on.
Thank you, Mister Chair, um so every school year, um a school district must appoint a civil rights coordinator. Um to whom and staff or parents may register a complaint if they believe that civil rights have been violated. Um it's my recommendation that Doctor uh Elizabeth Chamberlain, our assistant superintendent, serve in that capacity again this year.
I'm gonna entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to appoint Doctor Elizabeth Chamberlain as the civil rights coordinator for the Auburn Public Schools.
Uh second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just congratulations on another title.
And one more to come?
Yeah, she has one more, if you uh, that's your will, um so appointment of Title Nine Coordinator for twenty twenty one. Uh twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty one, or twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, excuse me, um.
Yeah.
Each school district must have a Title Nine Coordinator, uh to whom staff or students may register a complaint if they have been, uh they feel they've been sexually discriminated against. Um again, it's my recommendation that Doctor Elizabeth Chamberlain, her assistant superintendent, serve in that capacity as well.
So I'm second, I mean, do I have a motion?
Make the motion, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of both of those motions?
All right, thank you for.
Hi, both are unanimous.
Thank you for doing that, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on.
So so kind of dovetailing into the discussion we just had about my entry report. Um in concerns about our most vulnerable vulnerable students, um we received a notification from uh D E S I. Um uh the results of our special education review under the Individual Disabilities Education Act. So annually, the department must identify each school district and the Commonwealth's specific needs for any technical assistance or intervention in the area of special education. The department assigns each district one of four categories, meets requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, needs substantial intervention. Um in prior years, the special education determinations were aligned with district accountability levels, uh similar to M C A S. Um unless additional performance and compliance measures specific to special education warranted a change um in special education determination. The twenty twenty one special education determination process has been updated and specifically considers. Five-year cowork graduation rates for students with disabilities, the annual dropout rate for students with disabilities. Uh public school monitoring um for special education compliance data, the problem resolution system. Um, if there's, uh, an issue in a district, uh, or a family or brings a complaint, um, it goes to DESI. Um, DESI then is the intermediary between the district and the family. Um, performance on special education, state performance, um, and annual performance indicators, and then data and findings of significant disproportionality. As the attached letter from DESI indicates, um, I'm proud to report that there are no findings, uh, for the Auburn Public Schools, um, after a thorough review of our data. So I'd like to commend, um, our Director of People's Services, Mrs. Reedy, um, Dr. Chamberlain, uh, who worked closely with Mrs. Reedy on this. And, um, you know, when we start talking about moving the needle, you know, forward, you know, for our most vulnerable students, it's good to know that they're coming out of the gate knowing that everything's being done right to start with.
Yes, yeah.
So, um, that's, you know, these, these are like gold stars a little bit. So, um, again, congratulations to to them and everyone involved in that. And that is all for me this evening, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. And yeah, um, kudos on on those, um, high marks. That's that's great. It's whenever we're, um, having that kind of effect on, um, on those students who need us the most, um, it's much appreciated. Well, job well done. And we move on to teaching and learning.
Do I have to sit here? Do you sit here? I'll do.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just quickly first, I'd like to put your attention in your packet is a listing of the colleges and universities that our twenty twenty-one graduating class have received acceptances to. Um, in a quick count, it's a hundred and fifty-five schools. Uh, if you look at the list, it's all over the country. Um, wide range of spa- specialties and those kind of things in each one. So I think we have a lot to be proud of. We also have three students who'll be entering the military, one to the Marines, one to the Army, and one to the Navy. Uh, so I think that's that's a a another gold star, as, uh, Mr. Handfield just said. So a lot of great things happening at the high school, but it really is a very impressive listing of students that of schools.
I went through it. I have to say, I went through it and I was very impressed.
I I I.
It was really wide-ranging and.
Wide-ranging, yes.
Yeah.
So, lot to be proud of there. Gives us students lots of of options as they move on. Um, you know, and and, uh, the future is just wide open for them. So, very exciting. Now let's hope, uh, the storms stay away for Friday night, okay? Um, and just very quickly, uh, just a little review of the high school senior educational internship program that ten of our seniors, uh, participated in. This was through a grant through the Department of Education and the Mass Hire Central Regional Workforce Board, who provided the funding for this. Um, only high school seniors were eligible. They had to demonstrate some kind of interest in pursuing a career in education. Uh, ten were selected. They got paid to work in our elementary schools and our middle school. Most, when they were in class, worked two hour, uh, two hours each day, um, with some very, uh, finessed scheduling by Mr. DeLongchamp to make that happen. Um, and five have continued to work beyond their last school day. Um, and now we've been able to up their hours so that we can use the grant. So, so that's been great. Um, the participating seniors were Amber Camp, Rebecca McPherson, Mackenzie Greenwich, Emily Fitzsimmons, Samantha Latino, Nicole Clemente, Nathan Lewis, Nicole Miranda, Emma McGillren, and Georgia Pocopovich. So, nice selection of kids, um, and a wide range of experiences. Some of them did small group support with kids, some one-on-one support. They helped in all content areas. They also helped with lunch duty and recess duty. And these days, that's gold, when you have some extra body. So, um, and they were kind of connected with teachers in the building so that they had someone to go to to ask questions, get direction from to know what they were doing each day. So just a few quick pictures. That's Nate Lewis at, uh, Packer Chugg School. A couple of the other girls from from the high school. This is at Swanson Road. Um, but I can't tell you the positive feedback from the staff that received the support. Um, and the kids just really enjoyed it. So I wish we could have had them here this evening, but it wasn't meant to be tonight, um, with lots of things going on, getting ready for graduation. But um, something that would be great if we could continue these types of mentorship and, um, vocational experiences, which I know that's part of, uh, Mr. Handfield's entry plan and something that's been a priority for Mr. DeLongchamp. Um, not only in education, but in other areas as well. So hopefully that's something that we, uh, can continue to work on. And I'm gonna make one last plug. That's not on my agenda for tonight. You already heard from the AdCap folks, but Dr. Handfield's been sending out about our Encore program that's here, um, in our building, and they've been working really diligently on a garden out back. It looks quite beautiful, but they're still accepting donations. So if there's anyone out there listening that'd like to bring over some plants or some flowers or anything they could put in, they really appreciate it. They're working very hard on it. Um, and they're very proud of it. So I just wanted to make one more plug while I had the stage.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
Can you take money to help them or do you need the plants?
They can. Nope, they can. They've actually gotten a number of gift cards. They've gotten a few donations.
Yeah, yeah, gift cards to Home Depot are great. Um, you know, even Walmart, the Garden Center, um,
Mm-hmm.
you know, Target, any of those places that, you know, would have those types of supplies would be terrific.
Yeah, and we did have some very generous donations of mulch, big thing of, uh, stone, peystone that'll be coming.
Yeah.
Um, but it's just, it's so great to see them so proud. It's something that's gonna be lovely out in the back here, so.
Well, the plant is in the front. It's gorgeous, too.
Oh, and they did all of those. And they did it at the schools as well. So, yeah.
Yeah, they did. It was just.
Oh, that's beautiful.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's been great, so.
Through the chair, I just have to say a plug for this. There's a Miss Nicole in my son's class who we
Mm-hmm.
cannot speak enough about. We might have a little crush on her today. I drove by the high school seniors. They were like getting ready for graduation. He goes, do you see a girl with glasses on over there? Yeah, that's Miss Nicole. I said, well, what's her last name? Maybe I can give her flowers or something for graduation. They're gonna have to guess. I don't know.
Oh, that's nice. Yeah, they really, you know, you know how they respond to other kids, even if they're a little bit older than them.
Oh.
Um, but I think the feedback from the principals and the teaching staff has been what's been most tremendous. How well-equipped these students were to kind of step into these roles with a little bit of direction and some support. They really just jumped right in. So, um, that's remarkable for high school seniors. When we see some of our adult substitutes sometimes that struggle a little bit and they jumped right in. So, um, and I don't mean to disparage some of that, but it's just, uh, it was just a seamless transition. Um, a lot of kind of legwork, getting it up and going, but then once it happened, it just was great, so.
Alright.
Excellent. Thank you for that report.
Great, thank you.
Alright. And now for a little spark, we move on to business and financial.
Well, unfortunately tonight I have a very short little scenario.
Well, that's okay.
Um, I provided in your packet a year-to-date budget report dated, uh, May thirty-first, along with
Short spark.
in the first omnibus budget transfer that I've done for your information. Um, I don't need a vote tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Seeing none.
Okay. And then I also just, speaking of the garden with Encore, I know Mrs. Mrs. Querine is working on a list. We've had like a lot of people volunteer, so she's gonna be bringing that forward for your information for the next meeting and stuff. But yeah, it's been going really well. They're really excited, so. But we'll have that for the next meeting, okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, through, uh, excuse, through the chair, um, with, for the sixteenth, we'll have, um, we'll have a a a letters to accept the the donations that were sent. So you'll be able to see some of the things that were donated and then we can add that to the the listing of things. Um, it's, uh, it goes out in the updates and reminders that I send out on Fridays. Um, it's listed in there, but, you know, like we said, um, you know, gift cards, uh, you know, soil, flowers, seeds, I mean, anything, really. There's nothing that that can't be used. So, um, yeah, it it's looking great. So we're excited for that.
Excellent. Okay, um, we are gonna have a short executive session, if that's okay with everyone here. So I would entertain a motion for that.
Okay. For Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One Eight Two, to enter executive session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel in Section Three, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Will call vote, Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Stalloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman? Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes. There's a vote. Good night, everyone.